Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee Meeting. In attendance today, we have, of course, myself, Chair of the Committee, representing the 4th District, Councilman Cohen, representing the 1st District, and Councilman Costello, representing the 11th District. A few other members are on their way figuring out a number of other issues. Representing the Mayor's Office, I've got Sophia G., thank you, Sophia, and I don't see anybody from the Council President's Office at the moment. I see Preston has actually joined us. Forgive me, Preston. Today, the Committee is going to have a hearing on Legislative Oversight LO-23-0032, Legislative Oversight City Hearing for Day Laborers for the purpose of inviting representatives of the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, the Department of Human Resources, the Department of Public Works, the Department of Transportation and Parks, and the Law Department to discuss the potential for city agencies to hire day laborers to fill staffing gaps and ensure continuity of essential services. This bill was sponsored by myself, and I sort of just touched on this, but of course, we're here today to talk about an exciting possibility, an exciting possibility for the city of Baltimore, and one that I've really been thinking about for some time, and that is a day laborer program. Day laborer programs have a very simple mission, and that is to match workers with work and to match employees with employers and to fill gaps in workforces. In Baltimore, vacancies in key city agencies have unfortunately met gaps in city services and interruptions in city operations and have unfortunately frustrated many Baltimore residents. Establishing a day laborer program here could potentially connect people willing to work on a flexible schedule with city agencies star for personnel to do basic jobs. This arrangement would help fill the cracks at city agencies like the Department of Public Works, the Department of Transportation, the Department of Recreation and Parks, and others while boosting the city's economy by employing people who want to work but perhaps are not ready to take on a full-time job. Rather than agreeing to work 40 hours a week in perpetuity, day laborers could be assigned to an agency position for a day, a week, or a month, and this would link the resources and human power in Baltimore to bolster the city government services. One of the cities leading on this issue since the early 1990s is Austin, Texas, who we've fortunately got representatives here today joining us virtually to testify to the success of their program, and I'm really grateful for them to, you know, take the time. I had the opportunity to talk with them in advance about their program and how it today exists as a bridge between private citizens and day labor courtesy of local companies and individuals. Each day, day laborers are registered either as new or returning workers, and they're matched with jobs as they become available. City agencies crucial to the image and operation of our city and its government have repeatedly shared that they are experiencing serious issues filling positions, especially for labor-intensive jobs like trash and recycling collection, maintenance, and repairs across the city. A day laborer program can help to alleviate some of these temporary shortages and even has the potential to serve as a training and mentorship program, teaching trades and encouraging workers to pursue long-term employment in the same agency over time. So I'm looking forward to a fruitful discussion, and I'll turn it over to the agencies first and then our guests from Austin for any opening remarks and see if we have Employment Development in the room.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the council. My name is Matt Garvin from MoED. First of all, I want to start off by saying, as the workforce agency, we're always open to thinking about ways that we connect our residents to opportunities. And just speaking about, you know, our general thoughts and research, no way we're saying we're not open to a possibility of what a program could look like. These are just sort of things that we should think about purely from a workforce perspective. I know some of my other colleagues are going to talk more about the administration areas of having a program like this. So purely just thinking about the term of art, day laborer, from my understanding of what a day laborer is and perhaps others here, it's typically a person who is looking for some sort of temporary employment for a period of time, and that's also coupled with usually a group of individuals gathering at a certain location. Maybe it's a home improvement place, perhaps it's a convenience store. And so, day laborer programs typically are created to solve a set of problems. So I think just making sure what is being presented here and what needs to be solved in filling city positions aligns with what typically day laborer programs are. For example, government-run day laborer programs or day laborer programs where there's nonprofit intervention, or a day laborer program that is established by the workers themselves, like a day laborer center. Typically, the problem to be solved is the community may have some challenges with those individuals gathering at a certain place, or they're having challenges with the police, or they're looking for some protections as workers, not to be exploited, not to experience abuse, or if there's government intervention, it's often about mitigating some of the fluctuations in the marketplace because of these employees. And I think what we're talking about here is solving a challenge with vacancies within city government. And so, there is another way also to think about this, which is transitional employment. I think transitional jobs have been around since the New Deal, FDR, where you have a public subsidized wages, public jobs, and they're filled by individuals in temporary employment, and they're offered services during those time periods to help reduce barriers, and then that creates a pipeline into permanent employment. So I think just thinking about who are we trying to serve? I believe that there's a program in Philadelphia, and we, as a city, looked at that program that works with the population of individuals who are experiencing homelessness. Again, you're working with a particular demographic of individuals, really to connect them to services. And so, from a workforce perspective, it's really thinking about what is best for that resident that's being served? Is this something that is going to help them reduce barriers to employment? Is this something that is going to prepare them to be able to get a job with a family sustaining wage? And so, again, open to exploring and thinking about this more, but transitional jobs have been evaluated for decades. In Baltimore City, we have experience doing transitional work. We actually just had a very successful program during the pandemic called Baltimore Health Corps, and we currently have an ARPA-funded transitional jobs program called Hire Up, where many of those city agencies are employing Baltimore City residents, they're working in temporary positions in a supportive environment that's helping them to be able to create a pipeline into that agency. I think of the 69 individuals who have completed the program, 75% of them have been hired on by Baltimore City agencies. So if we can think about ways to sustain and scale initiatives that have been evaluated and are beneficial to our residents, I would like to do that as well. But again, we are open to exploring possibilities and hearing from other jurisdictions about how that could work in Baltimore City. Thanks.
Thank you. I have a lot of thoughts and questions about that. I want to make sure we get through the other reports first. So next, I'll move on to the Department of Human Resources.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Quentin Herbert, the Director of Human Resources. I would like to echo many of the comments of my colleague, but I will be speaking primarily from some of the human resources challenges that this would present. Likewise, we are always open to look for creative ways to solve some of our staffing challenges. However, with the day laborer program, there are a couple of things that we looked at in Austin's program. When we say day laborer, it's very clear that we talk about what we mean by laborer because most of our vacancies are in skilled labor positions and not the unskilled labor positions. And the program in Austin has a litany of classifications that they fill that are skilled labor positions, which would be the equivalent to our building maintenance workers, mechanics, as well as the unskilled labor positions. One of the, some of the issues that I would like to articulate with this program would be that with us, we would find difficulty in managing I-9 compliance, and I'm very interested to hear how Austin manages I-9 compliance with a potentially transient workforce. Also, performing pre-employment screening, because again, many of these labor, whether skilled or unskilled, positions are safety-sensitive positions and would require drug and alcohol screening and criminal background screening, and if we are talking about employees who would be working for the city for a very limited period of time, the question would become how we manage that and try to mitigate or minimize those costs associated with those screenings. Also, logistically, where this program would be housed? It would need to be somewhere in a centralized agency where, logistically, these laborers could be assigned to the agencies that need that assistance, and I don't think that it would be feasible to have them within the agencies themselves, but to have a centralized agency that manages the program. Also, we would need to ensure that there are enough HR practitioners to make sure that these temporary employees are entered into our HCM system, that their information is captured, again, getting back to that I-9 compliance piece. And also, we would need to collaborate with the Department of Finance around how we would pay the day laborers and how we would ensure timely payment of that workforce. Another issue that was, this would raise here in Baltimore is that unlike Austin, which is in a right-to-work state, we have very robust labor stakeholders that have very well-aged labor agreements that speak to the number of temporary employees that the city can utilize at any given time, and that if we utilize temporary employees to do bargaining unit work, it may draw grievance or other complaint from our labor stakeholders, and we would need to bring them in and have that discussion with them and have them be partners at the table in any real rollout of a program, day worker program, to ensure that, again, we aren't violating any of our collective bargaining agreements and that we don't engage in any unfair labor practice by hiring temporary employees. We also want to ensure that we, as a city, are covered with workers' compensation. The day laborer program presents some challenges with the Office of Risk Management in terms of liability concerns, both for those employees while they are working and the public while they are performing work on behalf of the city. Again, we are very open to having these discussions. I believe that we need to think outside of the box and be creative in how we pipeline talent to our agencies to hire into the vacancies that they have, and I thank you for this hearing and this opportunity. I think it's going to be a great dialogue for us to, again, try to find some out-of-the-box ways to solve these staffing issues.
Thank you, Director. Next up, we have the Department of Public Works.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the committee. My name is Richard Luna. I'm the Deputy Director for the Department of Public Works. I'll keep our comments brief, but likewise to what Director Herbert had mentioned with DHR, we're always open to learning about new programs to see how else we can create opportunities for our residents to come and work with the Department of Public Works in Baltimore City. We obviously have a number of different training programs that we offer, like our Be More Wise program, YH2O, our CDL Training Academy, so that we can get people in the door and get them into those critical positions that we have in the agency, primarily on the skilled positions. That's our CDL drivers, that's our operators over at our water and wastewater facilities. So we're here to learn more about the program and hear the information report from the city of Austin.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Department of Transportation.
Mr. Chair, Liam Davis, Baltimore City DOT. Thank you for providing us the opportunity to speak here today. I think our testimony is similar to what we just heard from DPW. There's definitely always going to be, you know, an open mind every time we talk about filling vacancies. However, a number of the vacancies that DOT has are in skilled positions, such as the CDL drivers. We are happy to see the administration really prioritizing working to get those positions filled with the recent announcement of the $10,000 bonus. And just as a summary snapshot, in terms of staffing for the agency, we currently have 1,083 filled positions, 305 open, and 119 frozen.
Can you repeat that one more time?
Yes. 1,083 filled, 305 are open, and 119 are frozen. The largest category of open positions is school crossing guards, but we recently hired 16 last month, in the month of February. And then after the crossing guards, it goes to CDL1s, CDL2s, and our TEOs, which are the largest vacancies in the department. We're open to having the conversation, but, you know, we also share the concerns that were shared by Baltimore City's HR Department as well as, you know, DPW. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we've got the Department of Recreation and Parks.
Good afternoon, Chairman Conway. I'm Jenny Morgan. I'm the Legislative Liaison from Recreation and Parks. We have our Chief of Human Resources, Agina Green, on the teams, if we can unmute her.
Sure.
She's going to provide our testimony.
Agina, you should be unmuted.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am with Recreation and Parks, and we do diddle with what Director Herbert said in regards to the day laborer program. We would be excited to explore this program, as Director Herbert stated, if it was housed in one particular department. As of now, Recreation and Parks, we transition our temporary employees who sit in SMO positions into our laborer positions. But if this particular program was housed in one department, if we have a need to pool day laborers, that would definitely be something that our agency would be interested in.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, and last but not least, the Law Department.
Thanks, Chair Conway, members of the committee. I know this is a hearing on the general concept of day laborers, and without more details, there might not be a lot for law to say, and I would certainly defer to the Labor Commissioner and Departments of Human Resources and Finance to discuss specific issues that might raise from, you know, collective bargaining or risk management perspective. As a general matter, whenever we're discussing employing individuals to take on city tasks, we do need to be aware of and account for liability issues, both in terms of injuries to the employee and the potential implications for workers' compensation, and also injuries the employee may cause in the scope of their employment and how indemnification and defense would be handled. So we'd want to make sure that those areas are clear and are addressed and are understandable in whatever agreements or contracts would need to be made with individual workers hired under a program like this. And additionally, to reiterate some of Director Herbert's concerns, whenever we're discussing, you know, temporary workers especially, we have concerns about implications for cities' collective bargaining agreements, you know, whether those workers are displacing individuals who could otherwise be hired as permanent full-time employees, you know, similarly, whether it appears the city's trying to circumvent its responsibilities that come with full-time employees. But again, we'll defer to those other agencies, but law is happy to partner and provide guidance as needed if and when such a program arises.
Thank you. I sort of wish we'd invited the Labor Commissioner, now that I'm thinking about it. Thank you. So that, those are our agency reports. We have two folks from Austin, Texas, Jay Tippido and Derek McKnight, who've joined us. Want to open up the floor to Jay and Derek? They're both joining us virtually. Jay, you're upside down. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. I can't hear you right now.
Sorry about that. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jay Tippido, and I'm with the City of Austin's Public Health First Workers Program. Just to give you some background on the program, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Just to give you some background on the program, the program initially started in the 90s, in late 90s, and it was really geared to address some issues that were, that were in the area in the city with, you know, with laborers and unhoused, kind of hanging out within the city, in the streets, sidewalks, and so forth. And this was addressed to, this program was started to really provide an organized space so that they can come in and exchange day labor work for pay. And our program is designed to really address those, the folks that were, that you see, like, maybe at a Home Depot or at a gas station, and they're just, they're just waiting for work. Our program is a structured, organized environment to where the workers, they come in in the mornings, they register, they sign in, they take their, they take their seats, and if they get there before a certain time, like 6:45, they're entered into a lottery system that we use to really keep everything fair and equitable. It scrambles their names, and then from there, they're seated, and it tells them whether they're going to see that, and when folks come in, citizens, small businesses, whomever, they can come and choose a worker, or they can choose the next person up on the list. There are rules that we have for the laborers to follow. The makeup of the folks that utilize the program are definitely, you know, unhoused, migrant, post-incarcerated, and so also just folks that want to supplement their income. I mean, we're looking, you know, we deal with folks that are hard-working men and women, and, you know, they're just dedicated to supporting their families and contributing to the community. Like I said, we provide a well-organized, safe environment to exchange work. Some of the immediate benefits of the program, it really reduces wage theft because prior to the start of the program, you know, when you, they would pick someone up at a gas station or a Home Depot, wherever they would pick them up, there's really no way of tracking who's picked up who and what was negotiated on. In our center, the staff are there to really be a mediator between the employer and the laborer when it comes to wage negotiation. We advocate for a fair livable wage. The laborer, you know, he agrees to the wage. For folks that aren't in our program, that was, there was no way of knowing, you know, you have workers that go out and work for a week, and they wouldn't get paid, and there was no way to follow up on that. There was no record-keeping, there was no database. And another benefit of our program, we have a program that we're starting, it's called the, we started, it's called the More Recognition Therapy. It's a cognitive behavior intervention-based program, and that's really, really good. That's a, that's a benefit of our program that we provide, it's a service, and that really deals with reframing thinking and reducing recidivism rate with incarcerated individuals. And just, that's another tool that our program has to offer. In addition to case management services that we provide, we try to address the whole person, and we use a wraparound, wraparound approach to do that, and that involves case management referrals, and we have many partners, you know, throughout the community, like Austin Urban League, Goodwill, to say, just to name a few, Texas Department of Criminal Justice, they're another one of our partners. So we have different partners that we use to refer folks to, and that we get referrals from, to really move the program forward. So we, that's kind of where we are right now.
Thank you, Jay. Derek, you want to add anything?
Yeah, just, just to kind of piggyback on Jay's comments, thank you, Jay, for that. My name is Derek McKnight, and I'm the program manager for the First Workers Program, and, you know, really, the program is, as Jay said, is to address the whole person, and in partnerships with our Neighborhood Services Department and other, other agencies that offer wraparound services, you know, we're able to refer the clients to, not only to some of the case management services that they have, which will in turn help them obtain their, maybe their social security card, if they have one, their driver's license, or even just a basic ID, help them open bank accounts, those kinds of, kinds of things. So these clients that, that come to us, a lot of times, they don't, they don't have any of those things in order, and I know one of the gentlemen was concerned about the I-9 aspect of things, but, you know, our, the whole premise of our program is to help them get to a point to where they can be, where they can become employable in terms of having all of the necessary documentation that they need. And again, just to reiterate with the city of Austin, our, our program, we are not hiring or paying these individuals, but we do help them negotiate the wage to make sure that it's fair. For example, if someone comes and wants to use our service in terms of taking a client out to do some yard work, well, you know, we're not going to allow them just to say they're going to pay them seven bucks an hour, especially when the city of Austin's livable wage is at 20 bucks an hour. So obviously, we're, we're going to get them pretty close to that as possible, and so what we've done is just kind of say, we've, we've set the stage to say, like, all right, if you're going to do, use, use the clients from our program, you're going to have to pay them at minimum 15 bucks an hour, and typically, it's a cash, you know, it's a cash payment for however many hours that they need the work done, so that we can, and that's just our way of protecting the clients and making sure that they're, you know, they're being treated fairly and not taken advantage of, because many of them, you know, they, they, you know, there's language barriers and all sorts of other things. So our goal is to ultimately help the clients become employable, and if we have, like, we have a couple departments that are second-chance employers, and if those clients stay with us, our goal is to help them, you know, become employed with one of, one of those agencies, but not until they have all of their ducks in a row, in terms of their documentation and everything. I mean, we can't do anything with them in terms of that, until all that's, that's taken care of. But in terms of funding, the program is funded and is a general fund program, which is funded by the city of Austin, and that's basically for the staff, the, you know, the facility, facility cost, and any other kind of supplies and materials or trainings that, that is needed for, for the program and the clients. We're happy to answer any other questions that you all may have.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Really appreciate you guys taking the time out of your day. I'm sure you have a lot going on, and so to help out Baltimore and thinking about how we're, you know, we can potentially help tackle some of the same problems you've been tackling for years is really appreciated. I just want to say that. We're going to open up the floor to questions, and I, I want to start off with one. This is, this actually goes to you guys. So, you know, as I've always thought about this, I've been thinking about the two big problems that we have across the city, that being vacancies across our city agencies and our ability to fill them, and people not being able to find jobs, and frankly, begging for money in the streets or being homeless in the streets, and how we can connect those folks to make, you know, that very obvious connection that needs to be made. When you guys started your program, it, it sounds like it started almost organically, taking advantage of the sort of informal infrastructure that already existed for um, taking advantage of the sort of informal infrastructure that already existed for day laborers. Um, and connecting those people in a more legitimate and structured fashion to jobs in the private sector or um in people's homes or whatever.
Right.
We had a very long conversation before this hearing, so um you guys are also now thinking about the concept of expanding that program to help with city jobs. Um, I, in in looking back at the program now, um, you know, going about it the way you guys did go about it, what are the, some of the strong suits and weaknesses of of approaching it that way? And um, eh, we can just start there, actually.
Well, initially, when the, when the, when the program started, um, it was through a nonprofit. And then the nonprofit kind of, you know, went to the wayside and then the city, because there were so many cases of lost wages, the city uh stepped in and said, you know what? Let's, let's give these folks uh um a safe place to go, somewhere that's out, out of the inclement weather conditions, et cetera. And um, and, you know, put a team together and just kinda continue to follow that nonprofit uh model. And so, so, so this is, so s- so we're not, so that's what we've done. And so again, the city's not hiring these uh clients, you know, directly. We have to get them to the point to where they can be hired because they need all the documentation and everything that they need. But in terms of, like, I think the, the um strengths uh of doing it, you know, the way, the way we've done it is that it really gives um the client some hope. They, it gives the, the city, really puts the city in a good light to, to, to be able to help um folks from all um ranges of of, you know, of the community. Uh, and so, and it's just um, it's just the overall, I don't know, I, I can just say, just the overall amazing um program. And the, the clients, um, they, they love the program. And then also, certain communities, so they're not in, uh, when I say neigh- certain neighborhoods, they're not in the neighborhoods standing on corners looking for work. They're in a uh um specific location and people can go to that location
Safe place.
and pick them up.
Yep.
Yeah, it's just in one, it's in one place and it's not all over the city. I will say at one point, we had two centers open, one north, one south. But the south center was not as um popular. And um, and so we, we moved the, to just the central location. So we're centrally located, um, you know, within the city. And that's, that's just uh been a, a huge benefit. Uh, I think that answers your question.
It does.
If not, please elaborate if you need to.
You know, that, that does help a lot. Um. Um, I, this is a question I ca- I'll start with you guys and um then kick it off to to HR. Um, but as far as our need for managing the program, I'm curious what your need is today. How many folks are, you know, participating in the management of the program? How many people are you guys helping daily, weekly, monthly, yearly? Um, it sort of sense of scale would be helpful here um for the investment.
Right. So in a, on a, on a normal um basis, we typically serve between sixty and a hundred clients per day. Right? Uh, now, that's not saying that all, but, and well, I'll say this, about sixty percent of those clients will go out to work um on, on any given day when we're operating at, at our fullest capacity. Uh, our busiest times of the year are typically like in the spring, summer, summer months. And then also more in the winter, when you, you, it comes around, you know, the holiday time because there's lots of companies that's putting up lights and people trying to get their yards together. And then also during those times when, like at the beginning of the, because there's several universities here in the, in the city. Um, you know, uh during the move in and move out times of, of the universities in terms of moving and those kinds of things with some of the university students. Um, so yeah, that's.
And how, how many staff uh operates?
So, oh, in terms of of staffing, so you have a, myself, the program manager, um, but I have three other programs that I, that I manage. And then you have, um, so Jay is the coordinator and then we have three specialists. Um, and those, those um specialists who are certified community health workers, I think it's important to note that. Um, and uh we have, we have three of those folks to, to kinda help manage and the day-to-day operations of the program.
Great. And um then I, sort of same consideration for MOED and for HR. Um, I, I know in preparation for this, you guys have thought a little bit about um what the administrative burden or capacity um might exist for managing people who may be looking for jobs. Well, you know, the idea initially for this is to help people actually work with the city. Um, Austin has a very different model, but between the two, um, if we were managing anywhere from twenty to fifty people a day, what, what does that look like for us and what, is that something that can be absorbed in our capacity or would that require new people or I'll leave that to both of you?
Um, so it's not quite, you know, apples to apples, but in the program that we run higher up, um, there are about five individuals that operate that program in addition to the fiscal people, in addition to the contacts at the agency, the HR and their team of supervising people. And it's different for every agency. I will say what's different about it is sort of how we manage it for the budget that we have to be able to pay the wages. Our magic number of people employed at one time is about fifty-five people. But keep in mind, those fifty-five people can work for up to six months. And some people are coming off earlier than the six months. Maybe the agency wants to hire them earlier. They're working with a business service representative, so that person might find them a permanent job even outside of the city. But those individuals are receiving services. So managing just that one group of people is labor intensive from having a career navigator, a business service person, a person that's helping them with um behavioral health, legal. And so to change that out every day would really be very large scale. Hopefully, that helps answer the question.
And yes, and I, I would like to just highlight some of the things that our
I'll get to you after, if you wanna.
That, that our partners in in Austin shared, they shared that um the day workers are not city employees. So that the City of Austin does not pay them.
Right.
Which uh, which would relieve a great burden from the payroll staff. But to my colleague's point, that, that ability to have to be able to manage a different group, potentially a different cadre of workers on a daily basis, um, that would entail who, whatever agency manages this program, some additional resources. Again, this speaks to how, and I think that that Austin initially had a nonprofit organization that managed this program and essentially that, the way that I've seen this work is that very model where a third party acts essentially as the employment agency. They ha- they're responsible for onboarding the day workers, making sure that they, they get the, the, the documentation that is needed and that they handle the payroll issues and the HR issues. And then those persons are then assigned, there's either an MOU or contractual agreement with the employees who utilize that labor. And they agree to terms on how, how much they will pay the nonprofit for that labor. The nonprofit is the employer and handles all of those backend functions which eliminates the need to have additional city staff managing that type of program. And that's, that's a model that I think that if we're gonna have more in-tuned discussions around day laborers, where that discussion should kinda go.
Got it. Thank you. That helps a lot. Uh, I wanna acknowledge uh Councilman Burnett has joined the meeting. Uh, Councilwoman Ramos has also joined um virtually. And I want to turn it over to my colleague, actually first, Derek, I think you had something you wanted to add.
Uh, you know what? I, I think I lost my train of thought. I'm sorry.
Don't worry, it happens to me all the time.
It'll come back.
I'm gonna turn it over, uh, start with Ca- Councilman Cohen and work our way down.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to all the folks who are here today. Um, definitely appreciate the intent of this legislation and the idea of how can we get more folks into our workforce. One recommendation for a next hearing on this would be to include MIMA, the Office of Immigrant Affairs, as um often many of our immigrant community um do day labor. And uh so I, I think they'd be good folks to have. Um, I'll say as a district that has a lot of immigrant neighbors from all over the world, um, we definitely see a lot of day labor in southeast. And one of my concerns is always wage theft and just not well regulated, particularly when it comes to contractors and subcontractors. I've spent a lot of time with the Office of Civil Rights trying to root out um wage exploitation. Um, so just something to think about here. Um, I guess for me, o- one of the challenges I would have is just thinking about wanting longer-term, sustainable careers for Baltimoreans. Um, and wondering, both in terms of like, you know, I, I think about some of our gaps around like trash and recycling pickup. Um, I think it would be logistically extremely difficult to plug people in on like a one, one or one-off or one or two-day basis um on the supply side. But then on the labor side, wondering kind of how, you know, I, I, I think having folks get paid a fair wage for a day's work is important, but I guess what is it leading to? Um, how is it building toward a sustainable career? So I think my question here is kinda getting at intent. Like, is this primarily to support folks who are unhoused? Is it primarily to sort of close gaps in our workforce? Just trying to understand like what the, what the problem is we're solving. Um, because again, I think to me, wanting folks to be in jobs or careers that are leading to more long-term sustainability for themselves and their families is critically important.
Uh, so I guess I'll take that question.
Yeah.
So I think um much in the same way that our gig economy allows people with cars to drive Uber or Lyft um or anything like that, that flexibility, I think, is really important um for folks to make a living in a flexible way. Um, and I think providing some sort of uh means to do that is, is first. Um, making it easy for people to get jobs and do so flexibly. Um, two, um, in thinking about the need in the city, and I, I understand there are challenges that we would have to really think about with regard to labor in our agreements and um flexibility within our city agencies on what jobs could actually use day laborers. Um, and you know, it's interesting and I, you know, the Austin folks here um haven't mentioned it yet, but uh we actually see some skilled laborers actually participating in their program, um, which was surprising to me. I thought that they would primarily, they probably primarily have low-skill folks, but they do have skilled folks, pipe fitters and otherwise, um carpenters, so-and-so forth, painters, so-and-so forth, um, that participate in their program. Um, we, we have a great need in the city and on both ends, both uh for connecting people to jobs and job opportunities flexibly. And then also within our city agencies and doing low-skilled and um as DOT, Rec and Parks uh and DPW have alluded to, some of the higher-skilled laborers. Um, and if there are ways for us to meet those needs in a um, in a quick or flexible way, I, I, I definitely wanna explore it. Um, not to say that this is necessarily gonna be the answer. Um, I don't know if it is, but I think um given the size of the problems that we're seeing, near thirty percent vacancies across the city, I think we have to ask the question.
Yeah, no, and, and again, I definitely appreciate um, appreciate that. I, I will, I will just big up some of the work that MoED does um higher up, but also uh just a lot of what they do to uh graduate careers and, you know, work getting folks into pipelines. Um, and so I guess I would just worry too that we not undercut our own like labor force, if you will, in the city. Um, and that we just be very thoughtful, you know, when you mentioned the gig economy, I think about uh, you know, how, how there've been some challenges there around um, you know, labor and s- s- lack of uh, you know, because people are ten nineties and they're contract workers, um, you know, not being unionized, not having uh support in that way um and, and seeing some wage exploitation on that side as well. Um, but again, appreciate um the, the, the challenge that we have and uh creative solutions to try to reach it.
Yeah, I, I think um when, when thinking about this, I, I, the, the labor question did come across my mind. And I think um a couple things here. Um, there are problems before people even get jobs, before we can even um talk about them joining a union. And I think um with a program like this, there is very much indeed the prospect and possibility and the hope that we can get them into union jobs. Um, I think for a lot of folks on our streets that aren't, they did, they have no work history, no nothing. And so it's getting that first toe in the door, um, building some sort of credibility with somebody that does have a need for folks that can do labor at some level. Um, building the consistency of showing up every day, um showing that you can do that and then hopefully getting a full-time job, um, you know, pr- pretty quickly. Uh, but I think the, the idea is to open that door as easily as possible. I think what we want to do as a city is to make it as easy as possible for people to do the right thing. Um, and I think my hope is that something like this would allow us to do that.
Gotcha. No, I appreciate it. And, you know, again, would um big up the, some of the transitional employment work that I think MoED does and just think about like how this would differentiate from that. Um, because I think I, I, to, to me, what you are speaking to is the need for wraparound services for folks, for in some cases, transportation support, for mental health, for uh, you know, there, there are a lot of needs that I think people who are transitioning into careers or into jobs have, um, particularly folks who've been out of the labor force for a while. Um, and, you know, again, would just uh appreciate some of the work that MoED has done on this, on this area and would be curious how, how this can complement.
Yeah, I, I'll be crystal clear. We spoke with MoED in advance. Um, I think, I wanna be crystal clear, this is not at all saying there's anything wrong with what MoED is doing. I think um we're trying to be a little bit broader or more creative. And I think MoED has a great program with Higher Up and we talked about that when we spoke about this idea in advance. Um, I think this would be solving potentially a different problem. Um, so yeah, just something to think about. Uh, I wanna hand off to Jay. It looks like he wanted to add something.
Hey, everyone. Uh, this, this program is so unique. It, it really reaches the uh, the folks that are in that gap that uh, that are, that want long-term employment, that may have a, a barrier here or there, but they're trainable. Um, in the past, uh, Home Depot would come by and actually train, have a carpentry class and train workers on how to tape and float and how to do different things like that, which would give them a skill set that they didn't have. And then from there, they can go get, they can go and apply for uh long-term gainful employment. So there's so many, so many benefits from this. Um, and even with the agencies within the city, they can uh, after they go like, like we, for us, we have an imar- moral recognition therapy program. The last component of that is a job readiness piece. That part of it is where we do mock interviewing, we go over um, you know, job conduct, uh how to de-escalation, resume building and all sorts of those soft skills that need, that folks need to have in order to apply and, and be productive in any organization. And I feel like um places like Public Works, uh, you know, uh, the Parks Department, any agency or department that's willing to uh, to train these folks, they can really fill a lot of voids and gaps. That's, and that's our goal at the end of the day. Get these folks paired up with um a department or a opportunity that they um, they match well with, department or a opportunity that they match well with, that they actually are passionate about, and, you know, see what happens, see what happens. And, you know, gain some skill sets in the process, and that will also, you know, help them long-term, get them out of the streets, give them something to do employment-wise, and give back to the community. So there's a lot of upside to the program, and we're seeing that here.
Thank you, Jay. I have a question, this is more to MoED. Do you, in sort of chewing this over, do you think it makes sense for us to, and I think I already know the answer to this, so I'm probably answering it for you in my mind, do you think it makes more sense for us to start, if we did do something like this, start it more broadly, opening these jobs to the private sector and potentially to government? Or do you think considering it from the government's need first, and maybe considering some way to make sure that we check all those boxes, make sure we meet the skills need and labor concerns and legal concerns? And thinking about how you would consider this program, Mac, how would you look at this? What are your thoughts?
So again, I think about everything from a workforce development perspective and us as an economic justice agency, and our mission is really to provide equitable solutions for our residents for economic mobility. So we're always thinking like that. So in a program like this, we would think about what is the best way to get someone in the door and serve that whole person while they can earn a wage, and then put them on a pathway so that they can have a career that's sustainable. That's where I would start. And if we were going to be thinking about that from a government perspective, if someone just came in for a day to receive a wage, what type of services would we be offering them? And working with the agencies, how could that potentially put them on a pathway for either a job in an agency permanently or in the private sector permanently? If I were going to go the government route. Again, I hear our colleagues from Austin, and a lot of the things that they're speaking about are about the wraparound services that are available for people, the training, et cetera. I think in Baltimore, we are really trying to build a coordinated workforce system. We made the largest investment in adult training, 17 train-up providers with ARPA funding, where people who are underemployed, unemployed can get that training and connect them to employment. Like I said, HigherUp, graduate careers. And so again, just starting with thinking about the person, and if it's going to serve our residents, for them to be able to actually better their lives in the long term.
And so when thinking about that component, wraparound for the whole person, we already have those programs. And so in conversation about the need for those services, we're not necessarily talking about brand-new programs or brand-new services. It'd be this program, a day labor program, that would tie into existing services already?
Yeah, we would have to think about how it would tie into existing programs and existing services, and what and how that could look like. And it's possible, and that's what we want. We don't want programs to be in silos, we want them to connect to each other. So if you had a program where someone worked for a day, making sure that was connected within the system, where perhaps maybe they could be connected to training, or they could be connected to something else, but not just where they would just earn income for a short period of time and not, you know, have a larger pathway, pipeline for them.
Yeah, and I think the other component, because I was at a community meeting last night talking about this LO, this bill, and one of the folks in the community was like, hey, look, I appreciate, we do so much for returning citizens, but I remember I was taking my nephew out to like the one-stop shop, and I didn't feel like he really got any due diligence because he didn't have an arrest record or he didn't have an issue. And she was like, I'm trying to prevent him from falling into that trap. And so I think there are going to be some people who don't necessarily need the full wraparound services, but just need a job. Like, we were all teenagers once, we all had to get a job. I remember, it was hard as heck. And, you know, so I think that's an important consideration as well, just making sure that there is an ability for a need to be met regardless of the circumstances of the people who need that job. So just something to chew on, you don't necessarily need to respond to it, I just think, I think it's important that we keep that in mind too. It's not, it's not just the people that are in like dire straits, sometimes it's ordinary people looking to find a, you know, quick job. Director, look, you had something you wanted to add.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And that point that you just made, I would use this as an opportunity to shameless plug, to lift the partnership that we have with MoED. MoED and DHR have been working with agencies to identify their critically hard-to-fill positions, and as I mentioned early, earlier, many of those are in the skilled labor positions. And so MoED has been a great partner with us to have targeted recruitment events with the agencies where they have the employees or the candidates who are city residents who have gone through the trainings, have the required certifications, and they are matching them with the agencies, whether it be the CDL classification or the carpenter classification. And we've hired a couple hundred employees in the agency since we began this partnership last spring. It's been very successful, and I think it gets to what you're talking about, that targeted approach. Everyone doesn't need all of those wraparound services, some people just need the opportunity and the vehicle to get to that opportunity. And MoED, we've been working together to provide that for that class of candidate for our positions. I just wanted to also highlight, when we talk about labor, and we kind of talked around the unskilled versus skilled, the need for unskilled labor in our operational agencies has diminished greatly over the years. In fact, I'm looking at the stats now, and we only have 51 vacancies across all of our operational agencies in the laboring, core laboring classes. Now, that does not include solid waste worker, but just laborer or labor crew leader. And in that 51, only 36 of them are laborer positions and 15 are labor crew leader. So that speaks to the great progress that has been made in pipelining talent into those entry-level labor class positions in our operational agencies. Now we have to do the lift of pipelining talent for those skilled labor positions that, quite honestly, Baltimore is not alone. In fact, I was at a conference with, a meeting with the leaders from SHRM last week, and that is number one on the list of not just public sector employers, but employers across the country, is the lack of skilled labor positions, and employers having to think outside of the box about how we fill these skilled labor positions.
Thank you, excellent points. Derek, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, I just wanted to just really make sure that it was clear that our First Workers' Program, we don't, we don't provide wraparound services directly. Those wraparound services are provided through our partner, through our partnerships. So for example, it's, our First Workers' Program is within the Austin Public Health Department, and so we have neighborhood centers, and the neighborhood centers, of course, they have the Community Service Block Grant, and they have, you know, they have all of those wraparound services. So there's community nursing, you know, there's rent assistance, there's utilities, all of those services are there. And so what we've done is partnered, built a strong partnership with those neighborhood centers, and we have the staff actually come to our facility to meet with, to meet with the clients. There's a designated staff from their team that meets with, that come and meet with our clients and go over all of those services with them, and then they also follow up. And the reason why we bring them to our facility is because our place feels safe to them, particularly some of the folks who maybe are just, been just recently released from incarceration, or because our staff have built a rapport with them. And it helps us keep kind of a thumb, you know, a thumb on those migrant workers. They may be afraid to go to that neighborhood center because they don't know what's going to happen if they go there, but they come to our facility because, again, the staff has built a rapport, we get them, you know, on the right track in terms of getting their documentation and whatever else that they need to become employable. So the program definitely can be beneficial for you all in many different, in many different ways. It's just a added component to what you're already doing, and it sounds like you all are doing some amazing things, and so I just wanted to just really make it clear that, you know, the First Workers' Program is not providing the wraparound services directly, it's through partnerships, and they just come to our facility.
Thank you for clarifying that. Any other questions from the committee? I want to thank you all, I want to make a couple of requests, because I think there's still, I think, some sorting out we need to do if we as a city are going to consider any of this seriously. I think it would be helpful if we could get a breakdown of the vacancies across the city, which are skilled versus unskilled, and by department. And, because I think, we have two questions here, the need for the city, and generally the need for access to jobs for Baltimoreans. And when I'm thinking about the city, understanding what the need is for our skilled and unskilled, and what type of skills those may be, CDLs and otherwise, I think it's helpful for us to know. Because it seems to me, based on what has been discussed here, that there may be a need for a separate entity to provide a buffer for the city, if we were to look at that in some way, shape, or form for liability purposes. And then, I, maybe this may just be a follow-up with MoED in thinking about the differences between our, how do we term it? We called it the, the sort of transitional work programs. Differences between transitional work plans and a day labor program, and the differences in those benefits, and what can be gained there. And if we did start a program, looking at the private side of things, and I mean, I'm looking at downtown partnership, waterfront partnership, and others, who are constantly trying to hire folks and help build a skill set that can hopefully turn into a career at some point, and a lot of those people are starting out as basic laborers. We have those relationships and can certainly find the utility. Assessing that problem, I think, is important as well. So I, maybe just a follow-up between you and I, Mac, would be really helpful.
Certainly, I would be, I would love to do that. I also want to note, I know that you, I think you said that MEMA would be appropriate for the following hearing?
If we, yeah, should we do another hearing in this committee on, under this LO, sure? And I think if we consider any other legislation, certainly MEMA would be included in that.
Okay. I also, I wanted to note that I believe that CASA does have a day laborer center, so it might be advantageous to have a conversation with them about how that is run with other nonprofits.
Excellent point, thank you. All right, seeing no further questions or otherwise, we're going to turn over to public testimony. I have a couple of lists here, and I'm not going to read through, because I think some people may be here for this hearing, and others for the following hearing on OEM. So if you are here to testify on the day laborers bill, I want to provide that opportunity And you have two minutes.
I got 20 minutes.
No. I like how you played that.
Good afternoon, everyone. Always was glad to be here to hear just the stories in reference to our underserved population, and I would definitely like to be a part of understanding the breakdown with homeless services. I constantly sit in the COC board, and I'd be wanting to hear how engageable are they on the encampments and other areas where these individuals are workable, and some of them do the one-day work, but they don't see where they're progressing, or if their skills are helping them get to a more permanent position. So I don't know how those conversations go, but, you know, I'm definitely sharing my information, because again, we work at the level of partnerships with agencies. We are not connected to the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, per se, so relationships and partnerships work really well with us, because we do the biggest housing piece of them. But having those partnerships could help us as a nonprofit to be able to get them to where they need to go as far as working and having an opportunity to serve in the community. And the second part of this is, I made a suggestion the other day in reference to the cleanup of downtown, and I had a conversation about the encampments that could be cleaned up by these extra hands that's roaming around. We have about six of them primarily like right downtown area, to where, you know, this, these cleaning areas, they do their best cleaning. I done been under bridges with them, they can do their best cleaning, but they can be more engaged with the opportunity to be working would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flowers. Anyone else here to testify on the day laborers bill? Seeing no additional testimony, I want to thank you guys, especially the folks out of Austin. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Please.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm Antoinette Ryan Johnson, I am the President of the City Union of Baltimore. And beside me is Ms. Dorothy Bryant from Ask Me Local 44. So I want to echo the DHR Director's point that modeling a program in Maryland on labor policies from a right-to-work state is not a best practice to start and implement. Let me be clear, a contract is not silent on the parameters of temporary people working in our bargaining unit positions. Since this MOU provision specifies the utilization of temporary employees in our labor contract, why not engage in the conversation with the City of Baltimore labor stakeholders before considering a program of day laborers? I have concerns that day laborers may drive down the wages of all current city employees, which contradicts the desired goal of the Mayor's Office of Employment, of reducing unemployment barriers and providing families with sustaining livable wages. When we speak of livable wages, how can the City of Baltimore ensure a living wage for day laborers but not for permanent employees? My members are struggling to make ends meet day-to-day with the rising cost of healthcare and other basic living necessities. However, their wages are not keeping up with inflation. They are working harder as we have an increase of open positions. How do we train a day laborer daily to complete the assigned task that our permanent employees are doing? Respectfully, sir, Uber and Lyft are private employers and are not subjected to the high level of accountability and the demands of being a public employee in the City of Baltimore. How do we look at our public employees and justify a day laborer coming in potentially making, making the amount of money in a day or more than what they do? What we need are permanent, well-trained city employees. I heard the representative from DOT speak about the number of open positions in his agency alone. We at the City Union of Baltimore collaborated with DOT to push to get people hired as crossing guards. For years, we have collaborated with the city on the joint apprenticeship program to ensure that those people who are placed into the apprenticeship program upon completion are provided with a permanent city job. We need to expand that program and figure out better ways of promotion of said program. Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree with everything that, my name is Dorothy Bryant from Local 44. I agree with everything that President Antoinette has stated. I would just like to add a couple of more points, that Director Herbert explained what the contract says, and we stand by that contract, because that's an agreement between the city and the union. We are not against hiring people, but we are against hiring day laborers. Make those people permanent employees, because right now, in our division alone for Local 44, just to give you some idea of how many vacancies that is not filled, it's 600 and something. Fill those positions, and I don't think we will be having the problem of not being able to fill our obligation to the public. So we are, I am standing to say- So we are, I am standing to say, we need to hire those people in permanent position. Give them a permanent position, they can survive. Give them the salary that's compared, comparison to other surrounding counties. They will be able to make their ends meet. Be, with day laborers, you hire them for one day, they are going to eat for that day. But if you hire them as permanent employees, they will eat for the rest of their lives.
Thank you. Um, any other testimony before we wrap up? Thank you all, especially thank you guys from Austin who took the time to, to let us know a little more about your program. Um, we will revisit the issue and I look forward to follow-up with folks to, to um, figure out what makes the most sense for Baltimore. Thank you all, and this hearing is in recess. We're going to reconvene in five minutes. All right, welcome back. And um, we're going to get started again. Our next hearing is on uh, Bill Twenty-one dash zero zero seven four. Uh, the Office of Emergency Management, an independent agency for the purpose of repealing Article One, subtitle eighteen, disaster control and civil defense is obsolete. Establishing an Office of Emergency Management as an independent agency, defining certain terms, providing for the appointment of an executive director of the office, setting forth certain duties of the executive director, providing for staff and budget for the office, providing the office to include specific emergency support functions in the emergency operations plan, requiring the office to coordinate with certain city agencies on writing the emergency operations plan, uh, requiring the office to update the city emergency operations plan, quadri- quadrienn- I can't say that word, quadriennally. Uh, and submit the updated plan in a memorandum regarding changes made to the plan to the mayor and to the city council, requiring the office to report annually to the mayor and city council on certain activities and metrics and providing for a special effective date. Uh, this bill was introduced on May first, twenty twenty-one, and it was sponsored by myself. And so um, this bill is, of course, focused on the Office of Emergency Management. And over its history, the Office of Emergency Management has had a few different homes. Uh, it functioned initially under the Department of Public Works before moving to the Fire Department. And sometime after that, it was moved over to the mayor's office, uh, before moving back to its current home in the Fire Department. Uh, for an office that um, is as important as it is and is expected to serve our city during its most vulnerable moments, I believe that it's incredibly important that uh, the Office of Emergency Management has stability in that um, I, I believe that uh, in some ways, considering making its, its own agency um, as many other jurisdictions have, is a great way to insu- ensure that stability going forward, uh, which is why we're here today. Uh, as we saw during COVID nineteen, uh, during the pandemic, there were many public health directives that were issued for the city to adopt and communicate with agencies and community members. Uh, in light of how the pandemic inv- affected city systems like trash, uh, trust management, recycling, uh, and as we've seen other emergencies such as the C S X silo explosion and the Ecoli water outbreak um, last year, um, I, I, I think it's, you know, important that we consider other approaches for the department. Um, the removal of OEM from the Fire Department would allow for a number of i- important things, um, in- including uh, conversations about uh, permanent employees, um, shifts to um, uh, shift to our, our, our hours worked, um, uh, more focus on emergency plans being completed and um, things of that sort. And um, I'm really looking for opportunities to address concerns, to allow OEM to have full autonomy. Uh, and this change, I'm hoping, would allow them to fully address their mission of maintaining the highest level of preparedness, uh, to protect Baltimore citizens, workers, visitors and the environment, uh, for an impact um, that we all may not always know is coming. So uh, with that, um, I want to open the floor to the um, city administrator who is not here, but I'll.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Thank you. I'm Sophia Agarohiwit from the Mayor's Office of Government Relations on behalf of the administration. Uh, the administration is, is not in favor of this bill, uh, for the reason that um, the, the office as a stance functions well and there is a cost concern and also um, losing um, some people in key position. But we will defer to Fire and OEM for more detail.
Can you repeat that last piece?
The part where uh, there is a concern about uh, losing key individuals, um, and, and I think more can be said from Fire and OEM. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next up, we've got the Fire Department.
Good afternoon, Dante Stewart, active fire chief. And we've sent the letter over to our council president, and I'm just going to read that letter. At the pro- proposed legislation repeals Article One, subtitle eighteen, disaster control and civil defense is obsolete, establishes an office of emergency management as an independent agency, defines certain terms, provides for the appointment of an executive director of the office, sets forth certain duties of the executive director and provides for staffing, budgets and required plans. Across the country, jurisdictions operate emergency management functions in ways that best suit the jurisdiction. In some, they operate as independent agencies, but many, including those in Baltimore County, Philadelphia and Wilmington, operate as a division within the Fire Department. Office of Emergency Management functions independently within the Baltimore City Fire Department. The executive director of OEM is appointed by the mayor but serves as a deputy chief in the Fire Department. This connection enables OEM to access the administrative and operational support that it needs to carry out all of its duties and responsibilities. Um, thought I said Baltimore City Fire Department opposes passage of Council Bill Twenty-one dash zero zero seven four. I'm going to have Assistant Chief Savella, who ultimately oversees OEM. He's going to speak more on the history of OEM and since it's been back in the Fire Department.
Uh, thank you, Chief. Uh, Chief Charles Savella, Assistant Chief, uh, Safety Member Services. One of the areas I oversee is emergency management. Um, so prior to COVID hitting back in twenty twenty, I believe, um, at that point in time, they were having some issues with OEM under the previous administration. We were tasked to um, come in and take care of it and take over control of OEM. Just after that happened, um, COVID hit and it hit, started hitting us hard. Um, under the direction, it was myself, it was Captain Brillman, and it was Chief James Wallace. The three of us came in, uh, both all feet, came in running, and we started putting our plans in place using the Health Department was the incident commander because it is a health issue. And OEM plays a role in managing the incident, which basically means we, they didn't take control of the incident, they helped um, coordinate how things were being done based on the recommendations of the Health Commissioner. We were able to set up testing sites initially. We worked with them for vaccination. We were one of the, we were the first jurisdiction in the state that started the, activated our E O C twenty-four seven from the beginning. And we, we were doing it. We had representatives from other areas. Obviously, we had to keep it virtual as best we could because of COVID, but we, we did a very good job of managing COVID along with all the other agencies dealing with it, so much so that if I remember correctly, one of um, under then the uh, president at that time, one of their people who was the COVID people even mentioned Baltimore and how we were managing it. So this was while we were under, OEM was under the Baltimore City Fire Department. Um, having OEM fall under us, under the Fire Department is something that's beneficial to OEM. They, they have full autonomy to do what they need to do. They are able to take care of the emergency planning. We found many shortcomings when we did take it over, when it was being a standalone organism, operation. So we found lots of shortcomings that we came in and once we got the COVID portion sort of under control as best we could at that time, then we started working on a lot of the other things. Um, slowly but surely, I've kind of stepped away from it and Chief Wallace and Captain Brillman and Deputy Director Elise have been moving on it, handling flooding, handling training. We're getting our, our agencies out there, getting them trained on incident command system, which is a very important part of the National Incident Management System, so that when we have these big events or we have these big incidents that they are able to, everyone knows how to operate, which all started back after nine eleven. So um, Chief Wallace has taken, excuse me, has taken the lead on that to get these other agencies on board, lots of tabletops, lots of training. Um, the Fire Department has helped assist with staffing of the, of OEM at this time. And um, I think our argument is, is that not only will it be fiscally expensive for them to be a standalone, but I, I don't think that by us working together and emergency management having the autonomy that they do have within our organization, I think it would be a big mistake to pull them out and have them as standalone. Um, that's just my opinion. Um, hopefully, walk, you all reconsider it because right now, it's working and it's working well. And I think the, a lot of the um, community is seeing that. And we've gotten a lot of, and I know Chief Wallace has gotten a lot of good feedback from how we're operating. Um, I could pass it on to the chief if you have any questions or.
If there's something you want to add, Chief Wallace, please.
Thank you, Chief. Good afternoon, Councilman, uh, Mr. Chair and, and members of the council. Um, Deputy Chief Wallace, on behalf of OEM, to my right is Deputy Director Elise Gillespie, Administration and Finance. To my left, Captain Brillman, Deputy Director of Operations. Um, I think, I think Chief Savella touched really on the, on the high points. Um, we, we all knew in twenty twenty that COVID was coming. We didn't know that we were going to be, you know, put in a position where um, we were, let me back up, we didn't know we were going to be asked to take on the task of, of really, I think, preparing the city in short notice, but also directing um, city agencies in support of our Health Commissioner for, for years to come. So I think um, with regard to the emergency itself and reasons for us having um, taken on these roles, I think it, it, it speaks to the, the, the kind of incident command and incident management experience we had. Um, Chief Savella touched, you know, pretty much on, on everything. I think that our success on the back end of, of COVID um, needs to be recognized as, as, as a whole city, uh, to, you know, a team um, approach. Internally to OEM, it was all of my employees, both uniformed and civilian. Um, we're currently positioned right now, coming out of COVID with a lot of ex- really good experience. Um, not only with just, with the pandemic, but also with the, the emergencies that came at us. And, and we all know how the weather has, has really affected us over the past few years. So we've been able to, you know, kind of multitask and absorb a lot of these hits that have come along the way. Um, you know, we're happy to answer any questions and we certainly look forward to, to more dialogue on this as we move forward. But thank you, sir.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have anybody else from the Fire Department? Thank you. Uh, next up, we have uh, the Department, Department of Finance.
Good afternoon, Mara James, Assistant Budget Director for the Department of, uh, for BBMR, the Department of Finance. We stand by our report. We defer to OEM and the Fire Department. Um, based on our analysis, we anticipate that there would need to be additional personnel for OEM, um, to provide the administrative support. At minimum, a fiscal officer, a human resources lead and an accountant. Um, we acknowledge that there could be um, some impacts in terms of uh, the shifting of the agency of OEM outside of the Fire Department on staffing support that the Fire Department staff currently provide to OEM around the duty officer program as well as.
Can you say that one more time?
The duty officer program?
Duty officer?
Yeah. Um, as well as uh, possible shifts in personnel from sworn positions that are within the agency to if it is moved out, what the impact would be there. We would defer to D H R and Fire and OEM on those impacts and can provide updated estimates based on that information. Um, we know that there are other costs that OEM has in their budget that are part of Fire's budget that we would uh, move with them as well as like assess any needs that we would need to, any updates we would need to make to that, those lines to meet those needs, whether it's changes in rent and fleet, depending on where those are. Um, so those are our big points. I think the one point to note that was discussed before is that this office has moved um, from various agencies. And so for us, a big point is just maintaining that consistency is helpful for the Department of Finance and looking at our actuals and budgeting to keep that for reporting, but also understanding the impact for our agencies, um, inconsistency there and coordination. And so that, those are our comments. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And then the city solicitor.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Elena DePietra from the Law Department. Um, the Law Department, uh, in its report noted that um, calling this an independent agency isn't quite um, in line with exact, with exactly what the parameters are in state law for this group. I mean, it's created pursuant to state law and um, it's governed by, by a couple of different provisions in the Public Safety Article. Um, they're subject to the direction and control of the mayor and under the general power of the governor. Um, the uh, State Emergency Management Body can include, uh, can require them to include certain programs and positions to meet federal and state laws. So there's um, and they're subject to the local government's budgetary provisions however. So the Law Department would, would um, like to see the word independent removed from, from the description because they really are, are not completely independent. And like, most agencies of the city government speak to, you know, have to report to other entities.
Thank you. All right, um, I'm going to open up to questions and I have a few of my own. Um, I'm, I'm, you know, a- as I thought about this bill, I'll, I'll tell you, the first thing that came to mind to me was, did it make sense? Um, and to, to be blunt, to have, um, and I want to be very clear here as well. Um, I'm not suggesting by any means that OEM has not done a great job. You guys are phenomenal. I just want to hats off to you guys. You guys really do put in a lot of great work and um, when the emergencies arise, you guys step up to the plate and knock it out the park as best you possibly can every time. And not knowing what's coming and still being able to, to thrive and succeed, I think is really, really important. Um, and I, I think though, the, 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 the biggest room in any house is the room for improvement and there's always things that we can do better. And I think one of the major questions when thinking about whether or not we would introduce this bill was whether or not the current structure made sense and looking at the history of the office, um, and if that made sense. So um, I, I said this in my opening statement, um, and I'll reiterate here, the history of the office is such that it started in Public Works, is that correct? Uh, then transferred over to um, uh, the Fire Department, then transferred to um, the Mayor's Office, then transferred back to the Fire Department. And I think um, I, I'm, I'm really curious for a number of reasons why those things happen, um, and what inefficiencies we've experienced. And you guys kind of alluded to it, we made that change right before the pandemic. But what inefficiencies we experience every time we move this, this office around? I'll start there. That, that'll be my first question.
And, and thank you for the question. I don't know that I can speak directly to, to the inefficiencies. When, when this move occurred in twenty twenty, um, as Chief Savella said, there were, there were three uniformed personnel that walked into a room that was entirely civilian. And it created, um, it created a lot of apprehension. Uh, it, it took several months, I think, for us to, um, to be able to communicate and, and also convince employees that, you know, we weren't there to make sweep. convince employees that, you know, we weren't there to make sweeping changes. We recognized the fact at the time that, that there were very, very well-educated and very capable employees on the civilian side, and that remains today. But at the time, it was very, very difficult for, for uniformed personnel to interact with civilians during time of emergency. Again, I can't answer the inefficiency question. I can certainly speak to what we, what we experienced as far as things that, that needed to be done and had not been historically done. I can certainly speak to that if, you know, that becomes a question later. I know that since that time, what I feel that we've been very successful at doing is being able to provide that crossover and that crossover knowledge between what a, what a uniformed, experienced responder can bring to a civilian world and the understanding that, that I feel like our civilians now have of what our responders are experiencing in the field. And I think that, that, that particular characteristic is, is extraordinarily beneficial to the city because it allows them to anticipate during times of emergency, anticipate where this is going and puts us in a better position maybe to not only prepare, but respond and mitigate and get in front of that emergency before it becomes a disaster.
I appreciate that. And Chief, for, part of the other consideration in putting forward this bill is that this is a practice that a few others across the state have considered and even outside of the state. For, for those departments, do they, do they still have sworn personnel or? What I'm, well, I guess what I'm asking is would establishing the department as, excuse me, establishing, establishing the office as its, as an agency, would that necessarily preclude sworn personnel from working in the department? Such that we detail people from agencies to other agencies all the time? Do we see that in other, in other structures?
I, I, I'm not completely familiar with what their employment rules are. We have two jurisdictions that, that touch the city of Baltimore that currently house their OEM under the Fire Department. Both of those jurisdictions are combination career volunteer. There are uniformed personnel in there and there are civilian there. To speak directly, you know, about their, their work rules with regard to that, I, I would be guessing, sir.
Regardless of the work rules, do, do we see sworn personnel serving some capacity of the office in those instances?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. And I'm, I'm curious now today, you said you guys, when you walked into the office before, it was purely civilians. And how, how many sworn personnel do we have in the office now?
And how many in the office now? There are three of us in there now.
Just three sworn personnel in the office now? And the rest are still civilians?
Yes, sir.
How many total?
There are 14 positions, 10 are filled, 9, 10, 10 are currently filled.
I'll offer if anyone has any questions before I, any questions? So one of the other things in thinking about, give me one second. In thinking about the structure of the organizations, like I said, when thinking about putting this bill forward, I asked, did it make sense? And you guys know very well that in the course of an emergency, OEM sort of kind of trumps all in some ways. They, they have to sort of problem solve for multiple agencies, Health Department, Department of Transportation, Department of Water and Wastewater, regardless of where they are, they're, they're kind of working across silos and sectors. And in some instances, the, the Fire Chief should theoretically have to listen to the advice and, and commands of sorts of, of the director. So I, I'm curious to that effect, how does that work? And once again, does it make sense as we have a structure today?
Well, I can speak with that. So basically, Chief Wallace, we've worked together for years. We knew exactly what, what the game plan is. We understand a lot of the Incident Command and how, what their role is in these, whether it's an incident or an event. Again, I have to remember that OEM does not take charge of anything. OEM is there to manage. So if it's an event, the event organizer or the Baltimore Police, or if it's a fire incident or something like that, they're the ultimate incident commander. OEM manages to make sure they have what they need. Chief Wallace generally will keep me in the loop on anything and whether it's Chief Stewart or whoever the Chief of the Fire Department is, gets, I have immediate contact with them. And then we just, we move on it. But Chief Wallace and Captain Brillman and his staff, we, usually they'll come to us with their game plan on how they want to handle things. So we pretty much know what their plan is on how to move forward with what we have going on. And then when an incident arises, it's an emergency incident. Generally, that's going to be us or police, or I think we saw it with the water issue. But Chief Wallace called me immediately that day when we had that issue with, with the water and we got moving on it right away, immediate. So there's no time lag. It, it gets done. We're all available and Chief Wallace also knows that he has the authority to start acting if we, if there is an issue with reaching out to somebody. So.
Yeah, I think I appreciate that. And I think, once again, this is just like me, Councilman Conway, just asking like really stupid questions. And while it, it works now, it hasn't always worked and it won't necessarily always work going forward. I could very easily imagine the scenario in which the Fire Chief decides he wants to be in charge and gets in the way of the head of OEM when OEM should really be the incident commander making decisions and making sense of things.
Again, sir, OEM is, is never the incident commander.
Uh, you, I thought you said incident commander. What'd you say?
No, the OEM, they know the command system. They manage the incident commander. So depending on what the OEM, so if it's an emergency type, I, if it's an emergency like a hazmat or something like that, Fire is the incident commander. OEM helps them get the resources, get the housing if, if we need to relocate people, if it's a public, if it's a, something that police would be in charge of, like COVID, perfect example. The Health Commissioner was the incident commander making the decisions on how things were going to go. We helped and we assisted, OEM helped manage what she was looking to do. So when they were looking to set up testing sites and they were looking to do all those type of things, OEM would then kind of work to make sure that happened. We got with the National Guard and we worked with Pimlico and we kind of brokered what we needed to broker. But we were acting on what the overall incident commander, which was the Health Commissioner, what her, what her needs were. And as those needs were brought to us, we did what we could to get what needed to be done, whether it was go to another agency, go to a private vendor, go to someplace to get these things done.
Forgive, forgive my terminology. In an instance where there is a problem, and I think I'll refer back to the, the water issue we had a few months ago. In that instance, OEM was between DPW and figuring out what the heck is going on and communicating to the public on what should happen and what, what folks need to do. Incident commander, no, maybe not. Nonetheless, they serve a critical role in figuring out next steps and what needs to happen. Well before that incident ever happened, there's also a process for OEM to regularly update their emergency plans should something like that happen. And so for the head of OEM to one, make sure that there is a plan. Two, when there is an incident, be able to refer back to that plan so that they know what needs to happen in instances like that. They're the person who would be most familiar and capable of saying, hey, look, we need to let people know water needs to be boiled in these areas and this is the latest and greatest in information that we have. Now, sure, of course, head of DPW is the person who's going to be telling someone at DPW, test the water, so on and so forth. I appreciate that. Maybe they are incident commander. But OEM serves a very critical role in making sure that the public knows what's going on, other agencies know what's going on. For instance, I don't know if the Health Department had a role in, actually, I know the Health Department had a role in this, but the Health Department, which is a separate agency. So OEM is managing multiple relationships at the same time. And I think that's what I'm trying to articulate, just that commander or not, that OEM may not necessarily see eye to eye with the Fire Chief. Now, you guys are great friends and I appreciate it works really well today, but that may not always be the case. And so I beg the question again, does it make sense?
Jay, can you, can you?
Yeah, I, I think where we are in, in this day and time, by, by virtue of having uniformed personnel and, and not sliding civilians, I want to make that clear, but by virtue of having uniformed personnel where we have them right now, we have that mutual respect. In addition to, to just the background knowledge, the institutional knowledge, we, we have that mutual respect. REOP and by virtue of its writings can put different agencies in, in charge at different times. And that's well spelled out within functional annexes and it's, it's further spelled out within the, you know, the base plan. What that does for OEM in general is, is it charges us with organizing that secondary and that tertiary group. And, and we've talked before about this, where, where we've had nine different incident commanders in three years' time, nine meaning nine different agencies be incident commanders. The one thing that we, we find extraordinarily easy is to convince that incident commander that our goal, our job and our goal is to build that team around them. And I think that, that model, that, you know, that way of thinking makes things extraordinarily easy for that incident commander. With regard to Incident Command, as far as the EOC is concerned, there are three different ways to run an EOC during an emergency. It can be run in ICS style, it can be run as a public agency style or a combination of both. I think we're very good at what we do because we use kind of a combination of both. If we lean a little bit left or right, we probably lean more towards a, a public agency style, whereas you see our sit reps come out and maybe have been at some of our briefings, we brief out by agency, with the, the theory being those agencies surround that incident commander in support of their mission. So I, I don't know if that clarifies any for you, but that's, you know, kind of how we do what we do.
Sure. I, I'll ask this question. If we were designing this office from scratch today and we had the resources and we had the structure, would we put it in the Fire Department?
I think it'd be a good idea because. I, I think it'd be a good idea too because the Fire Department has always had the lead in the National Incident Management System that is controlled through the state Incident Management Teams. So we're, we're all well, we, we got pushed right away when all that came out from Homeland Security, when that came out right after nine eleven, the Fire Department took the lead on that. Police initially didn't have an idea on it and obviously a lot of agencies didn't have an idea on it. They, they didn't understand a lot of the things. I, I can remember when we activated the EOC for COVID, when we, we sent out the email that all agencies will have a representative come to the EOC, we're going to start. We had one, one person from an agency say, when is this meeting going to start? And it was, this, we're not here for a meeting, we're, we're here to work. And they didn't understand the management system, which is what we were doing. So that is kind of why the Fire Department is best at taking the lead. And even if you're going to development, develop an Office of Emergency Management, because it's an emergency, because we know management, having the Fire Department, yes, it would be beneficial even if you were just starting it out because we, we have the quote unquote, subject matter experts when it comes to managing emergency incidents.
Thank you. I have a, a couple more questions and bear with me.
I don't know what you mean by?
Siri, stop it. These computers nowadays. So the, the other question I have is with, and I'd like if you guys could summarize this so I can understand the different pieces. For, if we, if we did separate it, what are the, what are the things that would break? What would go wrong if we separated them?
I would say the first thing would be the already established teamwork between OEM and all the other city agencies. So you would have to start from?
Say that one more time?
With, the first thing that would break would be the already established teamwork and the network between OEM and all the other city agencies. I would say that you'd have to start with scratch, start from scratch. You'd have to bring in an experienced person who understands the Incident Command System. As Chief Savella started off.
Why would we have to bring in a, a new person?
Well, if, so if you break off OEM, start it off as just no, own new agency. Chief Wallace, he works for the Fire Department. So unless you're going to keep that structure in place, if you start with a new agency, with a new agency head, you got to do a search, you got to bring in somebody who's experienced and well-versed in operating with all the different agencies involved. And then you have to build that team back up to have everybody feel as though they are an important stakeholder in the OEM process, just in case something does go wrong. Like Chief Savella stated earlier, ICS started with firefighting in California. Started off with the National Wildfire Association, that's where the whole ICS compound, component started. Nine eleven expanded it and brought it to the forefront. Been a member of the State Berlin Incident Management Team since 2009. And we started off as a region, treating us, Baltimore County, Anarodno County, Howard, and it was all Fire Department based. As we evolved into a statewide team, we started bringing in police departments, bringing in emergency management. And we focused from being a fire mindset, I guess, framework to where we are starting to incorporate working with EOC. So when we do get activated, I got activated during Hurricane Sandy, went to New, New Jersey during Hurricane Sandy. We operated in the EOC to coordinate the state ambulances for EMS for the state of New Jersey.
So would that change if we?
Again, if we, if we, if we bring in the right person, if the current lead don't stay in place.
I see. So just to sort of summarize your points, I think you're saying that if we moved it out of the Fire Department, Chief Wallace would not be able to serve in the role?
Well, the two people of, are both in the F and P pension system. And if they left the Fire Department?
Got it.
Now, that's obviously completely up to them, how they wanted to do that, but that potential is there, is that it could affect their status within the pension system at that point in time. And if that's something they would like to do, well, that's, that's obviously their decision, so.
I, I pre, that?
I mean, that's the, the bare, the bare facts on that one, unfortunately.
Yeah, no, I, that's why I asked the question. I understand Councilman Costello's got a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. More of a, just a comment from the opportunity I've had to interact with OEM over the last eight and a half years that I think is important context for, for framing the issue. First, this leadership team, kind of two-headed monster up here, along with Elise on the administrative side, has been nothing short of. along with Elise on the administrative side, has been nothing short of exemplary, fantastic, wonderful to work with, and has given me, as a citizen in Baltimore, not a councilman, some reassurance to be able to sleep at night, knowing if something goes wrong, there are people who are extremely competent and experienced, who can help steer the ship. My experience has been that, and I'll just run through a couple of instances in which the EOC was activated or was not activated. I know we talked about COVID, where the lead operational agency was the Health Department, the riots or civil unrest in 2015, lead being the Police Department, the Poe Homes water main break, which I don't believe the EOC was activated for, if I'm not mistaken, but should have been. That would have been DPW, the 25th, it was a 25th Street wall collapse, in that instance, would have been DOT as the lead agency. And I think it's important to note that the role that OEM has, has played in these emergencies, whether it be operating from EOC facility at a undisclosed downtown location, or onsite command. Another example that comes to mind is the E. coli water contamination this past summer. Again, lead agency, not Fire or OEM, but they've really served as a coordinating entity. At the end of the day, OEM, Chief Wallace is not directing, or rather dictating how the wall is reconstructed in 25th Street collapse, or where police coverage is to ensure that everyone's safe during protests, or to dictate how food distribution would go during an event, but is rather coordinating and able to essentially pull resources from all the various agencies through the, what is it, the Web EOC platform, and making sure that we have the resources that we need, whether those are inside of city government, or in the case of E. coli, where we were pulling resources from other agencies at the county level throughout the state. And it, it's one of the reasons why, you know, I, I've had some concerns with, with the concept. And I know, Mr. Chairman, we've, we've talked about that in the past, although it's, it's been some time since we discussed it. But anyway, I, I just wanted to share that context. I think it's important for the discussion. OEM has had a, a really unique relationship with the Fire Department. As a result of that, has been able to pull resources from within the department to support, you know, emergency activation responses over the years. And I think that's proved to be very beneficial to command staff in OEM, as they think about coordinating, how do we get the various things we need. We've got immediate access to, to everything we need within Fire, and, and able to, you know, act in that, in that kind of coordinating role throughout city government. So, thank you. I, I know I rambled a bit, but thought that was important context.
No, very helpful. I, you know, I wanted to acknowledge Councilman Ramos, who's joined the meeting, and Councilman Glover, I, I saw you come in, but I forgot to recognize you earlier on. Thank you for that context. And I want to, I want to share the sentiments of Councilman Costello with regard to, I mean, you guys are a phenomenal team, and I do really appreciate you. I, I think, once again, the idea here is, are we structuring our office, our, our, our city agencies in the most sensible way possible? And I think it's a very credible question to have and to discuss. I think, I'm, I'm really curious for the Department of Finance, and I don't know if, you probably don't have this on the tip of your tongue, but with regard to, or maybe even OEM has this answer, with regard to the size and scale of emergencies that we do manage. I, I know the report quoted a $200 and something thousand additional expense, and I'm curious, that is in light of what? Like, what size and scale of emergencies does this office manage? We can start there.
So this was not in terms of thinking about the size and scale of emergencies, since those would be hard for us to predict, to understand. What this was thinking about was the administrative support that this office receives from being in the, the larger Fire Department. So they have fiscal officer support, accountants, they have HR support. And so if they were to be moved out of that agency, they would need that support to just do the day-to-day operations, whether or not an emergency, they've been activated or not for an emergency. So that was where our analysis was focused on, to be a separate office, what would be the basic back of, back office operations that they would need support for.
Sure. And I think I'm thinking in the terms of return on the investment. And if, if there is anything saved, or by better coordination, or less transfer back and forth, or anything like that, like the size and scale of, and I don't know, Chief, if we have that sort of in our mind, on what we sort of tend to be spending on the E. coli outbreak, or the CSX explosion, or the wall failure, any of that stuff. Like, do we keep track of that at all, or no?
We would, we would certainly track over time, you know, employee costs, anything that would be done inside of the EOC. And we'll go back to E. coli. We were working to manage not only acquisition, but distribution of water. So we had to track as those purchases were being made. That's, was, was a problem for us. You know, we had, we had identified that in another hearing. However, now we have the ability with the Chief Data Officer. When we're going down that path, they come in right away. We set up, whether it's spreadsheets, dashboards, however we do it. But, you know, in short, to your point, yes, we, we do track where employee costs would be, and then logistical costs that would be involved with that.
Okay. Now, I'm actually thinking a little broader than employee costs, but I, I'd probably not something that we track easily.
Mr. Chair, just to note that depending on the size of the emergency, there might be times that we've tapped into the rainy day fund to have support for that. And so we could, we've used that during the unrest in 2015 as a part of our response. And for the 26th Street collapse, I believe we also had to tap into that because of the emergency nature and the scale of the response there.
I think, I'm thinking in, in the lines of like, what we report out to, for instance, to FEMA, when we have emergencies, and the size and scale of our expenses and operations as a result, and, and what sort of leverage or input this office has in those matters? Is that clear?
Sure. So the most recent example of PA would be associated with COVID, which we manage that process jointly with the Department of Finance. We outsourced most of that work to EY, but that is, I mean, that, we have received a significant amount of funding, and that's, we could have a whole nother hearing on that topic entirely. But that was largely outsourced by EY. They managed and had direct access to our financial systems to pull all of that information. So we wrapped our, I think, I think Baltimore City did an excellent job wrapping their arms around everything that we spent money on in response to COVID-19. And I think that's the most relevant example in our world right now.
Yeah. I, I'd be just very curious what, what that is, if we have it summed up, in reports to FEMA or any other agencies that help us support with any of that stuff. But that's all I have by way of questions. Any other questions, please? Councilman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Apologies to you and the committee. I was listening the whole way over, so I got a chance to listen. I was in Annapolis this morning, in afternoon. Thank you, Chief Wallace. Obviously, your team has just done a great job. I, you know, I just can't overstate that we, there's such important role that you all have played. Obviously, we first met during the flood, one of the floods on 35th and Hillen, and you were, you know, taking out your wallet and getting ready to get in the water to go save folks if you had to. And so to, to me, when we, when we think about emergency management, it's responding to an emergency, but also the planning, and just in case. For instance, the sinkhole that in, you know, Lake Montebello, I mean, that was, we were touch and go for a little while, but we had a plan, right? You had the plan. We all knew what was going to happen. And so I guess I'm just thinking about the fact that, you know, when somebody calls and has an emergency, who do you call first? We call 911, right? And, and you're connected into the Fire Department, I guess, really for a reason, because then, you know, you're the sworn off, I heard the sworn officer part as I was driving up here. But the fact that you can, you tap, when we think about an emergency, it's the Fire Department. I mean, bottom line, right? So I guess I'm wondering, if, since the OEM has traveled a couple of times, and it was in Fire at one point, they went to the mayor's office and came back, I mean, what, what was, what was the dynamic going on there? Because it seems to me to make sense to be near, or either, you know, near or in Fire because of the fact that, you know, when there's an emergency, it's the Fire Department that's going to be the first one to show up. And it's going to be, OEM is the first one to show up. And when we do the flood, you know, dealing with the flood, it's the Fire Department that shows up. And so I'm just trying to figure out, you know, if there's, what was, what was the issue before, and why it got changed around, and now it's, it's back? I think there was like four questions at the same time, but we'll ask that one first.
Unfortunately, I can't speak to the pre-existing dynamic. I was, I was a battalion chief, I think, when it went from Fire to civilian, I believe. And then, not long after I was a deputy chief, within six or seven months is when that change was made. So I don't know how, how it went back and forth prior to that. I, I, I don't know. I feel like we have stability right now, but I, you know, I certainly can't give you historical perspective on that.
I, I don't think it ever officially came out from under the Fire Department. I think they just changed the name from OEM to Mayor's Office of Emergency Management. At that time, there were still, the, the director at the time was a civilian who was overseeing it. Prior to him, it was, we had one who was, started out the Fire Department, then there was one, there was a director that was also in the department. But a lot of them came up through the, under the tutelage of the initial, back in the day, director who was from the Fire Department. And then they had, so, you know, from my recollection of it, it was, it was Bob Maloney, and then Spencer, who was the, after Bob Scott, you remember?
It was Bob to David.
Bob to David, okay. But then there was also, who was the, Brian Vered, was he, was he ever the director, or he was just, okay. So it went, it went from Bob, Connor Scott was in there for a while, he came in for a while, and then David McMillan was after that. And then for, I don't know all the particulars, but I do know that the prior administration came to Chief Ford at the time, and asked him if they'd be willing to step in and put a team together that would come in and take over the Office of Emergency Management. And that was Scott and Jay. I, I was there just as a assistant chief at the time, just because of my position, but they were the ones that did all the work. And they're the ones that got it up and running. I just helped them push through any roadblocks they may run in, they may have run into initially. And then once everybody got to know the two of them, and knew the job that they could do, they didn't need me anymore to push them through roadblocks. They were able to get through them themselves. And then that's when I went back to operations, and they more or less took the ball from there and went running.
One, one thing to add, that when it was the Mayor's Office of Emergency Management, it was almost entirely contractual staff. There were no permanent employees. Once the office was relocated back to the Fire Department, we were be able to, we were able to build out the office and start to build permanent positions. We're sort of half and half now with maps and GSS positions, which are in Cub. But prior to that, these were all contractual staff. So one of the really distinct advantages of being in the Fire Department with the support of a large agency is that we've been able to build a staff structure that is more permanent, that can, you know, last longer. People can get retirement benefits, et cetera.
Can I follow up on, on that? So it was contractual staff, and they were all civilian, right? For the staff that we've hired on since, they are Fire Department staff, and they're still civilian?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify.
They're either in a, most of them are grant service specialists, one or twos, most of the planner positions.
And can you elaborate a little bit on why? I know there's a somewhat complex history on why we had contractual staff as opposed to?
So our funding source for most of our employees is from Homeland Security grant funding. I assume that a decision was made that that was sort of a path of least resistance to get people quickly hired, and there weren't positions that existed. We've worked, we've been able to work with BBMR because the advantage of the grant funding that we have is that we are open for three performance, three years of performance periods, and we are often experiencing having three grant years open at a time. So you can forecast out much longer than you can for your average grant in terms of having a funding source, which led us to be able to do that work with BBMR to create permanent positions.
I see. You said to the, the Homeland Security grant is a three-year grant?
It's a three-year performance period. And like, right now, we have FY20, FY21, and FY22 open, and, and we sort of move through them.
And before, it wasn't, or?
It probably was, but I think historically, when you had grant-funded staff, it was not permanent. So you weren't, you were just putting people on contract.
Full-time staff, then have to lay them off. I agree. Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. Councilwoman?
No, I think that was my main, main question in terms of the, the dynamic between the two. I guess the last thing is, what's the, there's obviously an importance of having sworn officers in addition to, or in addition to civilian. And, and it seems like having sworn leadership is important. Can you go a little bit into that, or does it really matter whether it's sworn or civilian leadership of the office?
I, I think in the case of where we're at now, what, what we're able to bring is, is that institutional knowledge and background. We've, we've been in the field, we've experienced the emergencies, we've experienced the disasters. And I think we're able to bring a, a better, how shall I say, a better element of preparedness, because we, you know, and I hate this phrase, but the been there, done that. There's, there's a lot of things that, that we've done as, as a Fire Department, especially natural disasters, even man-made disasters, that, that really correlate with where our EOP is. So it helps us prepare that, it helps us better train, I think, city agencies, and then better prepare in general, just, just on the experience basis. The one other advantage, I want to circle back to, you know, the advantages of Fire Department that was asked earlier. We, we have an OEM-10 duty officer program right now that we're, we're very proud of. It's predominantly Fire Department. There is one Police Sergeant that is part of that as well, but it's predominantly Fire Department. And what that does is, that's a response program, that we handle responses to the field in the daytime, because we have uniforms available right on the spot, ready to go. We can go out and support. After hours, weekends, and holidays, we have an on-call person. They're in a vehicle, their responses are, are driven by pre-existing MOPs, manual procedures from within OEM. So that's supported almost exclusively by, by Fire Department personnel. They know they're there to support, but what that gives us is some background from Fire Department perspective, to be able to interact right into an incident command framework very early on. And, you know, go to that incident commander and say, hey, we can get you this, we can get you that. But I, not only say it, but actually do it. So that, that program was, was in place when, when we came over, but we restructured it. And Captain Berman and my Operations Section Chief Thea King have put a lot of work into that. And I'm extraordinarily proud of that. It's a very effective program that really gives that support right when it's needed to that incident commander.
I, I want to circle back on a small.
Just real quick, just a follow-up on that real quick, or you want to follow up?
There was a follow-up on that.
Okay, go ahead.
And just to clarify, would, because the, the OEM-10 program, we've got people detailed from the Police Department. If broken out, would we be able to detail folks in the Fire Department? fire department?
Fire.
Into a separate agency is the concept?
So it's an on-call program.
Okay.
I mean, fire department is, they're part of that now.
Got it.
The biggest challenge often is, are the vehicle operation requirements under emergency conditions. So that doesn't, you know, you won't necessarily see other agencies that have the ability to certify their people to operate under those certain conditions, whereas fire and police, it's done by default. So it's there, it's a convenience, it makes the program work.
Thank you. Sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to follow up and just say, you know, you obviously need a break, and that's why you have the duty officers, but I know that you've answered our calls at two in the morning if we need to. So I do appreciate, I do appreciate that, but understand, you know, how you did this backup program in case you weren't available.
Yep. And I think, I want to summarize what you're saying, what I'm hearing from my colleagues, and I would agree with as well. You guys do a great job and we really, really do appreciate you guys. And I think what I'm hearing is if we moved it, it makes challenges for staffing at the top effectively that we don't want to put ourselves into. Is that fair to say? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, I appreciate that. I don't have any other questions. Anybody else? Thank you, guys. We're going to go to testimony. I don't see anybody here. Do we have anybody online? Nobody online, nobody on phones. With that, I want to thank you guys. This has been a bill that's been hanging out there for a long time. I know we had some conversations and this actually helped clarify a lot for me. I think, sort of my sentiment here is, it's not broken. I'm not sure that it still makes sense, but it's not broken, and I certainly don't want to break it, knowing that we seem to be having crises every day. Nonetheless, I think what I have sort of molded around in my mind is what the future looks like, and I still think we should be thinking about that in the future, and I don't know what the answer is to that yet. And, you know, I just, I don't, as the sponsor of the bill, I don't think the answer is now, but I don't know that the answer is never. And so I, you know, I appreciate you guys, you know, taking the time to talk through the issue, provide your perspective and insight. You know, we may or may not revisit this again in the future, but just appreciate you guys. Thank you. This hearing is in recess.